All right, we're going to start. These two are challengers in the BK City Council race. As I said before, I'm going to give them each three or four minutes. Honestly, because there's only two of them, I'm not going to be strict about the time. So I'm just going to allow them to introduce themselves and feel free to take, you know, three, four, five minutes, it's fine.
We figure we'll probably be a little faster since there are just two of us. So I'll give you a little time back at the end. So I'm Joanne Taylor. I have lived in BK since 2009. I live in the homestead. My husband and I moved to BK from southwest Austin. So we started living in Austin in 1999. So we've been in the Austin area for a long time. I went to UT. So I've been here for a really long time. But we moved to BK because we really loved the feel. Like it's the Hill Country feel. It's the quality of life that you have in BK. It's like you're close to things, but you're still far enough away that you get that sense of peace and solitude. And so that's really why we chose to live in BK. I've been in education for 24 years. I was a teacher for 10 years. I taught English, high school English. If you work here earlier, you heard my husband talk about my English class. And then I went into central administration, working on kind of innovative initiatives around educator effectiveness. And I now service the chief officer for the Texas Center for Educator Excellence out of Region 18 Service Center. And we work on helping school districts align their goals and their human capital management systems in order to improve educator effectiveness for student outcomes. So I've managed large-scale budgets. I understand RFP processes, contracting. So I understand all of the pieces that can go around that, as well as like, how do you look at initiatives? How do you plan? How do you think about bringing things together? And then I decided to run for city council for a couple of reasons. One, I'd like to preserve the quality of life that we have in BK. And we have a lot of challenges coming up, especially with development. And there has to be a balance between what's going on and the quality of life that we have. And so that was one of the reasons. The other reason was I really, I look at our council and there's not a lot of transparency. And so I would like to have a more open and honest debate that goes on. And I'd like to see a lot more communication about the things that are going on. So I decided to throw my hat in the ring to see how this all goes. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andy River. I am running for BK City Council as well. A little bit about myself, I was born in Indiana. Went to Indiana University with a history in political science major, so I've always been interested in that. My family's always been very active community. My grandmother and then my mom ran the United Way of the County for about 40 years. My dad's been on city council in the small town I grew up in for about 22 years. And besides faith and family, most important thing, my family told me that you need to give back to your community. So that's something I've always tried to do. I work as a regional manager, have sales and marketing for the Bourbon Company. We are the oldest and largest clock and bell manufacturer in North America. And I'm shocked that you've ever seen anyone that's worked for a clock and bell. We did the bells at the top of the UT Tower. We work with churches, but more importantly, we work with municipalities, courthouses, and developers. And according to my 26 years in Still County with them, I have worked with developers, with cities to create focal points, parks. And so I have a little bit of background on that side as well to see the importance of creating community centers to create open spaces and things that people can use. One of the coolest projects, we just got a contract with the state of Texas to recast a replica of the cannon that was used to the Alamo. And that will be installed when they make the changes at the Alamo. So we're pretty proud of that. In 1997, I moved to Texas, so at this point, that almost makes me a native. Moved to Williamson County, very active in party politics up in Williamson County. Just naturally wanted to get involved. I was on the charter review board at Cedar Park. I was in the planning and zoning board of Cedar Park. And then I was on the Cedar Park City Council. That experience showed me how, as the city, at that time, the city had about 25,000 people. Now it's about 80,000 or 90,000. And what it made me realize is that, you know, the decisions you make at the very beginning, you can't change those. And you have to have the input of people and the community. And one of the things that amazes me is that the least attended and the least voted on elections is the one that affects you the most. And that's the school board and the city. Because those taxes are much higher than any county tax. And obviously, we don't have a state tax here. Those policies, the planning and zoning, the mandates that we've been talking about, all of those were local, but no one votes. Everyone says, oh, I'm going to vote for the presidential election. Well, that's great, but realistically, in the day-to-day life, it doesn't affect you as much as these do. So it's important for me to be involved in that. In 2030, my wife and I suddenly decided, or found out, we were having our first child. I also got accepted the UT MBA executive program a year early, which is very intense. My wife looked at me and said, pick. And that was a very easy choice. So I got off city council and spent about 15, 16 years being a dad. I've coached baseball, coached basketball. My kids, my sons play travel ball. My daughter has done a lot of things. My daughter went by horseback riding. So we moved around a little bit. Moved to Lakeway, actually, in Lakeway. We love Lakeway. Lived in the back of golf course. That was a great idea, to have all this open space. And so we started having to dodge a lot of golf balls. Realized that being on 14th tee on the right, when everybody slices about where everybody lays off of the tee is not where we want to be. So we did a lot of research, and with my wife being the horses, we found a great neighborhood in BK with two acres. Because we love this part of Travis County. We love the Hill Country. We moved out here. Prior to moving and being in Lakeway, I've been the president of the Lakeway Rotary Club. We've done a lot of work here. It showed me a lot of the things and the challenges. One of the things that we're proud of is the scholarships that we give to late Travis High School students. One of the things that was really eye-opening to me was working with the high school in the Castle Lounge. And real quickly, that's one of the teachers the school district was talking to me about, Megan, who left to go to Bowie. She and some of the students realized that we have homeless kids here. We have kids that live in the parks, live in tents in the parks. You would never think that when you pull into the school and you see Mercedes and Land Rover partying out. There are a lot of kids in these big houses that parents have divorced, they're gone all the time, they're by themselves, they don't have food. And so these teachers started something called the Castle Lounge. They got a lot of support from that. But what it's done is basically give those kids a place to come in without having to be ashamed or afraid and get food and things like that. So I, doing things like that in the community through the Rotary Club has kind of given me an idea of what's out here and what we can do and how we can use city resources and school resources and social resources to kind of work together as a community out here. Because Lakeway and BK, Jennifer asked me earlier, she says, where's the boundaries? I'm not sure where they are. BK basically starts at the HEB. There's a neighborhood right behind that called the Uplands. It kind of runs up 71, comes out 620 to the high school essentially. So everything, once you cross, going that way to the high school, you're basically in BK. It goes out 71. BK is landlocked. Lakeway kind of cuts it off to the north and to the, I guess, east. And Austin kind of ends in Derby Springs, so it's the other direction. So our footprint is kind of what it's going to be. And so I decided to run for city council because I really feel like with my experience in Cedar Park and some of the growth, working with developers and trying to keep our little slice of Hill Country and, you know, that we were able to really make a difference.
Okay, both of you are challengers in this race. Is there something specific that the current council is doing or not doing that you would like to see changed?
I wouldn't say there's anything specific. One of the biggest things, and I want to go back to being on city council, once you are on a board, a commission, a council, or even a business, you kind of see how the sausage is made, so to speak, right? You can kind of see things. And a few items that popped up, the city appointed their city manager to the water utility board, which I see and thought was a little bit strange. So that was the first thing that kind of popped up. And I started noticing a lot of little things like that. And I was very curious and started asking around. And I think that, as Joanne mentioned earlier, transparency. I think, you know, like I said before, the city government and school districts are the thing that affects you the most. And the most important thing is getting community involvement. You can't have a group of people that just don't reach out. I think the Lakeway people were talking about, how do we get, you know, on boards and commissions? Well, I know from being in Rotary, volunteers and in sales, people aren't just going to knock on your door and say, I'm here. They want to be asked. And you'd be surprised if you just ask people, hey, would you like to help out with that? Sure, absolutely, I would. And so I think to get more community involvement, we have to go out and hunt people down. We can't just put something on a blurb on a website and hope that somebody goes and finds on our website and goes six pages in and finds, fill this out, and then maybe we'll call you. You have to go out into the community and be active. You have to send out emails. You have to really make an effort with that. And I think that that's one of the things I want to do, is really incorporate community. We have our city council meetings at 6:00 PM. That's very difficult for anybody that works to come home, try to get home and go to a council meeting. One of the things I would advocate is to push that an hour back to 7 o'clock, to allow people to come home, get their kids some food, and then attend the council meeting. As we've gone through COVID, I think that's, you know, everything in our world is going to change. There are things that are good, some things not so good. And one of the things I think that we're going to find is that this interaction and meetings, giving people an option. We're in person, which I'm thankful that the mayor and city council and city manager did. But I think we still need to, you know, keep those options, like a call-in or a televised, because that gives more people involvement. You've got to have people involved. You can't just say, these same people we're going to recycle on boards and commissions. I think that council members should not be on boards and commissions. Again, I experienced that at Cedar Park. When you see a council member or employee of a city on a board and commission, you've suddenly tilted that commission. Because the other people don't have, won't speak up, won't counter that. And the best decisions are always when they're discussed. Jennifer, you mentioned something about having civil discourse, okay? That's important. It goes back to Tocqueville's America, right? Its civil discourse has made this country great, you know, what it is. It's not one person saying, let's do this, and everybody kind of follows along. You've got to agree to disagree, discuss things in the open. And that's one of the things that we're not really seeing is, on the dice, the discussions aren't really being made. And so it's 6-0, 6-0, 6-0, 6-0. There's no discussion. I'm not saying that every decision's wrong, or that any of the decisions wrong. But when you're not discussing those things and having those, that discourse back and forth, you don't know what the principles are that are guiding the council members. You don't know what the principles are guiding the mayor. And you don't really know why these decisions are being made. And I think that that's the most important thing, is opening it up, get as much involvement as possible, to make sure that the decisions you're making about open spaces and parks and roads are decisions that the community wants. And you just don't wake up one morning and say, when did this happen? Well, the council passed something six years ago that allowed this road to go through, and now all of a sudden, this property that we thought was going to be parking is not commercial.
I agree with a whole lot of that. It's, I think, for me, one of the things I've noticed about council is that it is the 6-0. So there's not a lot of openness and transparency on why things are being done. But there also seems to be sort of a dismissiveness about citizens. So I've gone to council, I've spoken at council, and every time I've been, I felt like it didn't matter. And I think that's a terrible thing. I think it's awful as a citizen to go, to voice your concerns, and for them to have already made up their mind and not care what you have to say. And that's one of the things that I've found, and I've listened to council over the years, it's something that I've found repeated, that there's sort of just a dismissiveness about, yeah, whatever, I don't really care what you have to say. And in fact, sometimes it's even combative. I mean, I've sat there and I've listened to either council members or former mayors tell people that they don't know what they're talking about, and that they don't need to be up here saying these things, and that you're wasting our time. There's a lot of dismissiveness, and that's something I don't find acceptable. I think there should be a level of respect. You are elected to represent people. You're not there because you want to make a clique, or have a friend group, or whatever it is that you're trying to accomplish. You're there to represent people. And you need to listen to what they have to say, and you need to weigh that. And if you aren't going to honor that, you need to at least explain why you're making the decision you're making. And I think that's one of the big pieces for me that I'd like to see. I'd like to see a lot more respect for the people that come, for the people who are involved. And I would like to see more, more inclusion, because it is the same group of people that are on these committees, are on these boards. And part of that is, we need to go out and recruit. We need to do these things so that we can have a stronger community. And so it isn't that we're pitting neighborhoods against neighborhoods. That's not how it should be. We should be all coming together. It doesn't have to be that, well, we don't like you, and you don't like us. Because I, I mean, I actually got asked that question when I was going out and talking to somebody. She was like, well, I don't think your neighborhood likes our neighborhood. And I'm like, are we in middle school? It's such a strange thing to me that as an adult, I'm having to, I'm like, okay, and that's, no, we actually don't have a problem with your neighborhood. So I think that's one of the pieces of, like, there shouldn't be that kind of division. We need to think about coming together and being a lot more united.
Okay, this is a repeated question. Clearly, COVID is a big deal to me. This year has been a difficult year due to COVID restrictions. We kind of talked about the county judge not lifting the mask mandate. Do you agree with continuing the mask mandate? And if not, what policies would you implement for the city of BK? What other policies can the city of BK implement to help the city return to normal, specifically address the library and the municipal court services?
So I'm absolutely in favor of people making decisions for themselves about the masks. That should be a personal decision. I'm all in favor of freedom. Everybody should get to make a choice about what it is that they want to do. And so I don't think there should be a mandate about wearing a mask. I think businesses should be allowed to make that decision as well. And if a business wants to have people wear masks, then they should be able to do that. We should think about whether we want to go to those businesses if we don't want to. But I think, I think they do have that right as businesses. And I do think we have to recognize that there are larger businesses like H&amp;M or Barnes &amp; Noble that have corporate offices that are going to make decisions for them, that they're not making those decisions for themselves. And so I think we have to be cognizant of that as well, that those are going to be some of the pieces. I do think it's time for us to start coming back and doing things in person. We have city council meetings in person. I do think the library needs to be open. We heard earlier from one of the other panels that, you know, the CDC has changed some of the guidelines around social distancing. Obviously, I think that you could offer the same option that you have now for curbside. You can definitely allow people to make that choice. If I want to come to the library and engage, we can have story hour, we can do those things in the library, or you can do curbside. There, you have options. I think that's one, one of the things that we can take away from this whole year is that we now have different options for how we want to engage with businesses. And I think some of those things are going to stay in place, and I think that could be a really positive thing. When it comes to the court, I also think that needs to be in person. I think you can do some things virtually, and that works. I think, you know, if you're paying something online, or you're requesting information, those things work. But if you're going to have an actual trial, and you're selecting a jury, and you're going to be heard, I think it's very important to do that in person. Something gets lost on Zoom, on those virtual, I mean, I spend my whole day on Zoom, so I know exactly how it is. There are just parts of your day where you're like, okay, it does, you glaze over. I think we heard that from council member Vance, that, you know, there is a point where it's like, it's Zoom fatigue. So I do think that it's really important, when you're dealing with people's lives, that those things be done in a way that honors them and that brings them face-to-face so that they can go through that process in the way that it was intended.
I think respect's a two-way street. I think that personal responsibility is everyone's initiative. I think we have to respect the people that do have COVID, whatever, COVID, right? I think we need to respect that there are people that are concerned about it. And I think we need to do what we can to help those people. I know people that, my personal assistant is a cancer survivor, and I certainly wear a mask around her or other people. One of the things that frustrates me is that there seems to be a divide where there are people that think, there are certain people in our society that ought to make sure that they do things and take care of their needs. And what I'm talking about are the workers. I'm talking about the people that work at HEB, that work at Total Wine, that work at Marshalls, that work at CBS. And those people should go to work. Those people should have to go out and make sure that I can have my things brought out to my car. But I don't, I don't want to go to work. You know, I shouldn't have to. And I think the respect there has to be mutual. And so when we're opening things up, businesses do have the opportunity to say, hey, you know, we would prefer if you wear masks, we would like to help people. But I think it's a two-way street. If there are people that don't want to wear masks out in public, and, you know, and it's not a corporate policy, then they ought to respect that, just like I respect the fact that there are people that are sick, and I'll wear a mask around them. As far as the library, I see no reason why the library's closed. The schools have been open since August, and my kids have been going to school. I have a junior and a freshman late Travis. You know, now that it's gone from six feet to three feet, I don't know, the last time I was in a library that I was eight feet away from somebody. You know, I'm more, most library people are introverts. They go, they get a book, they sit in the corner, right? So, you know, I don't see the social distance to be a problem. I do not know the staff at our library, so there may be some issues there. But I would hope that they would get the vaccine and feel comfortable doing that. Courts, that's a whole, to me, the library and the courts are two completely different situations. The library is a social place that, for our community to go, to learn, to read, to get together. It's a more of an education. Courts are a right. That's a constitutional right, to have a jury trial. Yeah, if you want to get on Zoom and just pay your parking fine or do something. But if you want to challenge a parking ticket, okay, you have the ability to do that in a trial, a jury trial. How are you going to pick a jury on a Zoom call? How is your attorney or yourself, if you're representing yourself, going to do that in a Zoom call? I mean, we all, you know, like you said, Gretchen said, oh, you glaze over. Okay, this goes back to constitutional rights. If we can't open our courts, I mean, and the court's the same thing. I mean, you know, you've got a judge up here by himself, you've got a plaintiff, you've got a defense person, maybe the police officer, and maybe two or three other people. I mean, we're not talking about 50 people backing into the OJ trial, right? We're talking about just a handful of people. But I think we need to look at the rights of the community and the ability that we offer in this country to have jury trials. And that's, that's another thing, you know, about this country, is we allow that, and that's a right, and we've got to treasure that and value that.
Okay, the city of BK is home to some highly traveled roads and intersections. While working with Tech Dot, what areas do you see as the biggest concerns and the best solutions?
So getting to what we've been talking about, well, let me ask first, who's from BK? Does anyone live in BK? Great, wow, fantastic. Okay, so what's neat about BK? Yeah, well, maybe neat, but we are really cut up. I mean, we have Hamilton Pool, we have 71, we have 620, really slice-up neighborhoods. That being said, we have to deal with Tech Dot on not just one road like Lakeway, 620, but we also have 71 we have to deal with. So the important thing that we need to do is work with Tech Dot at the intersection of Hamilton Pool Road and 71. The development that has gone out, Hamilton Pool Road, is just insane. And they just, the waterboard just okayed. More development out there, it's going to put 1,100 more homes out there, which is going to increase the, increase the traffic, which is going to increase the traffic at the elementary school that's there. 71, I mean, you guys have driven out 71, seen Sweetwater and all that development, commercial development, everything. All those things are happening, and it's all kind of compacting right there. And the city has got to work with Tech Dot on that intersection, because Hamilton Pool Road is a county road. Tech Dot is 71. BK is a, BK Parkway is a city road. So you've got a bunch of entities, the county, the state, and the city all coming together. And that's, that's probably the most important part. Like one of the Lakeway people said, the 620 corridor is Tech Dot. They have a plan for it. It's going to go from, what, two lanes or three or four lanes? But that has been funded to go to 35, so that's been pushed off. But that, that's pretty much done. The Wyatt Oak Hill, the breaking ground on that in the next couple of months, so that will, that will clear up a lot of the traffic. But what that's also going to do is drive a lot of traffic. And like anything, you never build enough roads, you just push the traffic congestion further out. So all the congestion that's, that, the Wyatt Oak Hill is now going to come to a screeching hall at Southwest Parkway, which is going to push it on in there. So those are things that we have to work with, I think, with Tech Dot, is really look at how they're going to address the situation on 71, and then more importantly, at the Hamilton Pool Road intersection.
I agree that that's a big area. And within that, they're also considering adding additional lights. So between Hamilton Pool and 620, they're going to put a light in at the new development, at the new, right in front of Spanish Oaks and the Homestead. So there's going to be a light there. And then they're considering putting a road that will come from Hamilton Pool up here and putting in another light. So I'm like, really? We're going to have four lights in this span of this far? I don't think that's a good idea. I think if having that many lights together is going to create more traffic, it's going to be more congestion, and I think that's problematic in lots of ways. We've even, we talked about, as living on Great Divide, we talked about moving the entrance, and we were told, no, you can't do that because of the sightlines, and you can't have lights that close together. And now they're thinking about doing that. So it's like, hmm, I don't know. So I think that's one of those areas we're really going to have to pay attention to, and we're going to have to work with those entities, with the county and with Tech Dot. But also, as a city, thinking about our thoroughfare plan to make sure that it's not creating more problems than it's correcting. So we want to make sure that we're not creating those additional areas. And I know some of that traffic, when they do Vale Divide from Hamilton Pool to Vale Divide, and they create that, that will help a little bit. That will create some of that traffic will go that way and cut across. So I know that will help some, but I know that that whole area is going to be an area we're going to need to pay attention to.
There are BK residents here. If you will raise your hand, if you want an index card and you want to submit your own questions, if someone will help me pass that out while I answer, while I ask these last two that I prepared, that they're prepared for. The city of BK has three volunteer boards and commissions. Would you make any changes to how these members are chosen? And then I'm going to go ahead and ask the next one, and you can answer both, and that way we'll have more time for their questions. How would you make yourself accessible and available to citizen business concerns at BK?
Okay, I addressed the boards and commissions a little bit earlier. I think that, a couple of things. One is, it's important that everyone that's on a board and commission in the city is from the city. I think that's very important. I don't believe city council members need to serve on boards and commissions. I think it waits, that creates a balance and really negates the reason to have a board. You look at that as an advisory commission committee. You look at that board to come to you and give you recommendations, not go in and tell the board kind of what you're going to expect from them. I think that we need to reach out to people. I think that we need to recruit people and encourage people to, and again, it goes back to, anytime you do something, you know, when you, when you ask somebody, you'd be surprised how many people will volunteer. When you sit and wait for people to raise their hand, it doesn't happen very often. So I think that that's very important. I think that trying to minimize the number of overlap people that you have on boards and commissions is important. I think that, you know, putting this person on this board and then, you know, making a charter review board with six people that are on other boards kind of negates that also. So I think that's important. And again, it's just opening it up to the community. And that's, that's what I would do with the board and commissions. And again, the people that are serving on the boards and commissions are really, you know, they're good people. It's nothing that, I don't believe anything they're doing is inherently wrong, that they're bad people. I just think we as a city can do better. And that's where I think the growth, as we continue to grow in our population, we've gone from about 6,000 people to about 8,500, which may not sound a lot in pure number, but percent-wise, you're talking a 30% increase. You're looking at another several thousand people before it's built out. So you're going to have these things and these decisions that have to be made. And like I said, you know, the boards and commissions are there to get input from across from across the city, from the different, whether it's Falcon Head West, or the Homestead, or the Uplands, or Ladera. You want that different input, because the people in Ladera are going to have different ideas about traffic flow than the people in the Uplands, which is back behind our HEB. They don't go our way, right? But Ladera has to fight the traffic that's trying to get around Hill Country Indoor. So everybody has a little bit different. And if we try to open that up to the different neighborhoods, then we're going to get a better thing. And I'm a huge advocate for the more input and the more information, the better the decision you can make. And what was that? Okay. One of the things I did when I was on Cedar Park, and I will continue to do, is every quarter, I will have a meet and greet. I'll probably rotate it around to different coffee shops or whatever. And I'll have some in the mornings, some in the afternoon, and evenings. But I want to, you know, and now I'll advertise on social media, everything else. Say I'm going to be at Austin Tea Exchange, or I'm going to be at whatever, from 6 to 7, so that people can come and ask questions directly. Because when you're sitting on a dice, a lot of people don't know that during citizens' comments, the council's not supposed to interact, we're just supposed to listen. And that's important too, listening, which I think has been a challenge lately recently. But we can't interact. And so if we have a meet and greet, you come out and you say, hey, this is something that's affecting me, or hey, I don't understand why we're building this road, or tell me about the backyard, or why are we crisscrossing our park with these roads you're planning? You can have an interaction, you can get feedback from people that are directly affected about that. And so as a council member, I will definitely have each quarter, and if it's well attended, maybe a little more often, a meet and greet. I'll also respond to emails, phone calls. I'm, you know, I'm one of those people, I'm in sales. It really irritates me when people don't call me back. So I try to have the same respect and say, hey, you know, if you took the time to communicate to me, and I may not, I may completely disagree with you, but I respect you, and I respect your opinion enough to at least respond to an email and say, you know what, thank you for your input, we can talk a little bit, but I may not agree with you, but let me hear why you have to stay.
When it comes to the commissions and the boards, I agree. It needs to, we need to have more representation from the different neighborhoods. We need to expand that out. It doesn't need to be the same people over and over again. And we definitely need to think about the different perspectives that are being heard. We shouldn't be just appointing developers to the water board. We shouldn't just be, you know, putting people that it's going to advantage, that they would have the advantage, it helps them personally. So we want to make sure that we're providing more voices on those commissions. And I do think we have to go out and recruit. We do have to go out and say, hey, we want you to participate in this. We want you to be part of our community and be part of this process. Because we aren't going to get better if we don't hear from everyone and know what it is that we need to do differently. And so I think it's really important, and that goes hand-in-hand with the communication piece. So I would do something similar, and like I was thinking about coffee with a council member. So kind of doing something where people can actually come and talk with you about their concerns, about the things that are happening in their neighborhood, and really be heard, and heard in a way that we haven't seen happen with our council. I think that's really important. Also, one of those people that I can't leave for the day until I finish all my emails. So it's one of those things where I always have this, and I respond. That's, it's one of those, it is a pet peeve of mine as well, for people not to respond. And so it's definitely something that I would respond back to, those communications. So phone calls, emails, thinking about maybe doing a newsletter where people can see, like, here are the things that are coming up, here are the things we're, you know, involved in, putting that out on social media so people can access it. Kind of thinking about those different ways of communication. There are lots of ways to communicate, but they aren't always effective ways of communicating. And so you're going to have to look and see what works best for people and make sure. I know we have lots of homeowners associations, places where we can send information that gets sent out. We have the benefit of having something like that in our neighborhood. And that's, I find that to be incredibly helpful, to have that as a way to communicate as well. So thinking about those different ways to communicate and getting more people involved and making sure we have a lot of different voices to make sure that everybody is being heard.
Any questions? Okay, awesome. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, you do have a question. Yes, go ahead.
Because I'm a resident of B Cave. I'm just going to do a little program here. That you talked about transparency. I mean, personally, very, very upset that the three incumbents haven't decided to turn up this evening. That's a lack of transparency or an overabundance of arrogance. One of those two things that neither of them sits well. Two, it comes up all the time, every single time we have an event, too. The question of traffic comes up. And we need to understand that the poll council only has tangential influence on what goes on on the roads. So it's not something the council can solve in its entirety. Now, it is true, from past experience, we have seen if we throw some cash into the poll, Text Dot is much more willing to help us. So we can help if the city is willing to pony up some cash. And we can help if the city is careful about how it does its development. Because clearly, the way you do development has effects on traffic plans. So anyway, so that's just my, that's my program. So my question is, because we've got time here. You mentioned Hill Country Look and Feel. And this has sort of been a perennial issue. And it is oftentimes the thing that people talk about as why they came to B Cave, even though very few people can actually define it. And it's a part of the comprehensive plan that we put together some years ago. I mean, it's a big part of why people are here. So the question is finally, and you can answer it in one or two, either parts of this. So what could we do better going forward to make that Hill Country Look and Feel something that we can all point to as one of the things that is B Cave? Or what haven't we done well? That's gotten us to the position we're in today, that we need to change course on to put us closer to that Hill Country Look and Feel?
For me, the Hill Country Look and Feel is about the open spaces. It's the room to breathe and to do and to congregate or not, to have some solitude. And I think we have in B Cave an abundance of those spaces. They're not well utilized, and they're not set up to be well utilized. So we've got the Central Park, which definitely needs to be improved. It, you know, when I think of Central Park, when you hear the term Central Park, you think New York City, and I don't necessarily want that. But it definitely doesn't have that green, open feel. It is just an open field, but there needs to be a little more development of the park with the paths. And I know they're thinking about, like, I know there's a new park plan that was proposed recently, which has a lot of roadways. I'm not sure that that's what I think of when I think of Hill Country Feel. I'm thinking about more spaces to go and do things. I think the Sculpture Garden is an amazing space that needs to be better maintained. I think there's some things you could do to really make that a great, awesome space. And I think that's an area. We have the Brown Track, which is yet to be determined what we're going to do with it. So I think that's also an opportunity for us to have some of that Look and Feel of the Hill Country, like keeping those spaces open, not slamming a bunch of things, a bunch of development all together. You know, when I think about, you know, yes, the development that's going in at 71 and Spanish Oaks and Great Divide, it gets very dense. And to offset that, you need those open spaces. So you don't want everything that we have in B Cave to end up being developed. So for me, the Hill Country Look and Feel is really about those open spaces, having the trees and the nature, and having the ability to go out and enjoy those things.
I think we all live out here because of the Hill Country. I think that the lakes, the parks, Hamilton Pool, Reimer's Ranch, Mule Shoe, all of that. Couple of things come to mind that the city can do. We have attractive land. Well, for those of you that don't live in B Cave, there's two huge developments that are, one of them broke ground, and one's getting ready to break ground. They're both on 71, they're between Hamilton Pool Road and the Galleria. The one on the south side, or I guess the west side, is called Spanish Oaks. It's going to be a large, multi-use housing development with shopping. It's going to be various, the shopping's going to be similar to the Galleria with kind of walking spaces. Across the street, next to the Central Park, is going to be what's called the Backyard. It's going to be a concert venue, breweries, mixed use, and more, a little bit more office space than residential. But that all, right now, is very Hill Country looking. That's going to go away, that's going to look a lot more like the Galleria. There's attractive land between the LTYA baseball fields and the Great Divide, which is, Little Barton Creek kind of runs through B Cave. And this tract of land fronts Little Barton Creek, it's an old ranch. And the city had bought it, but they have not dedicated it towards anything specific. One of the first things that I will do is try to get the council to make sure that that stays in some type of open space. Either a park, a conservatory, a bird and wildlife refuge, something. Because again, when that's gone, you can't get it back. It's on the creek, that creek flows unless it's really, really drought situation. Some other things we can do, the Hill Country Feel as a city, and this helps with the water quality and with water too, we can strongly encourage native plant use and landscaping, especially when we get permits. If it keeps the water down, it makes us that Hill Country Feel. You know, sawdust palms are not native to Hill Country, okay? San Augustine grass is not native to Hill Country. There's a reason why it doesn't grow here, because those need water. So, but we can use native grasses, we can use native plants and trees and things like that to keep the Hill Country Feel, but also to keep the water. Our aquifers, the neighborhood we live in used to be on all well water. It's one of the oldest neighborhoods in B Cave. And Spanish Oaks, which is a huge development, a big golf course next to us, they're on well. And the few people that are still on well in our neighborhood cannot get watered in the morning from their well. Because when Spanish Oaks waters their golf course at night, and the other people water all of their lawns at night, the aquifer drops so far, it's below where those pumps were drilled 20, 25 years ago. They don't get water out of their wells until later in the day when the aquifer is recharged. Okay, so we, there's two aquifers out there, there's the Trinity and the Edwards. Both of those are really, water's a whole nother issue. We could probably be here another two hours talking about that. But that's something where really, everybody, Lakeway, everybody, I mean, look at the lake. I mean, the lake's down again, we're starting in the drought again, and we have hundreds of thousands of more people here than the last time we had a drought. So these things are all interrelated. We've got to work with our Conservancy boards, we've got to work with our utilities, LCRAs, to figure out what can we do as a community to keep the Hill Country Feel, keep the water, keep the aquifer there, to keep the creeks and streams flowing, you know? Those springs dry up, there's no Little Barton Creek, which means there's no Barton Creek, which means there's less water in town lake, right? So all of these things are interrelated, and we've got to kind of work there. And then finally, I think you did the addressless, too, is Hamilton Pool Road, John. The comprehensive plan calls for Hamilton Pool Road corridor to be set aside as a Hill Country type of, you know, roadway. And I forget what they call it exactly, but it's basically a roadway. We know 71's going to be commercial, we know 620's commercial. They wanted to keep Hamilton Pool Road a small kind of wandering through. Yeah, that worked out really well, didn't it? We, you know, so the water board then decided to continue to give more and more water, even though the council three years ago, or four years ago, set in place that we're not going to give water out there. They went ahead and voted with the water board to go ahead and give those 1,100 homes out there. There's two other developments out there with the same number of homes, okay? So you're talking about draining more water, taking more water, and it's just not the water problem. It's the traffic. If you've been on Hamilton Pool Road, it's a two-lane road. There are people trying to turn into schools, there are people trying to turn into businesses. You know, you come screeching to a halt, there's traffic out there. You're talking about a lot of money just to widen that road. Then you're going to have the same issue, it's just going to continue to perpetuate that issue. And we're going completely against our comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan isn't a rulebook, but it is a guideline. And if we don't want that, and we're okay with Hamilton Pool Road looking like 71, with a bunch of strip centers and huge development, then we need to talk about that on council. That needs to be debated, and that goes back to what Joanna and I were talking about. These are things, you've got to look forward. You have to discuss these things and how they affect the decisions today or going to make this look later. You can't just say, oh, well, let's throw some water out here because they want water, and we've been in a lawsuit, and we're tired of paying our lawyers, and so let's just end the lawsuit and give water, okay? I mean, you have to stand by your principles, and you have to make decisions as a council member. And some of them are hard decisions, you're never going to make everybody happy. You're going to run into HEB and somebody's going to yell at you. It's our life, but anyway, so that's my opinion, is how we kind of keep that Hill Country Feel, is we work on the Brown Track, keep that open, work with developers to encourage native landscaping and that sort of thing. The Brown Track is a section of land that's between, kind of from the ballfields to about halfway to the Galleria. And there's a creek that runs along, if you kind of look from 71, it's kind of flat, and then it kind of goes into hills. That creek is what kind of separates the hills from that flat stretch of land. And that track was purchased by the city, but they have not and will not make a determination. One of the things they're talking about doing is taking a road from Hill Country, or I'm sorry, Hamilton Pool, and taking it all the way across behind the baseball diamonds, and then going to 71, which is fine. But then they want to push it from there all the way around the Brown Track, through the Brown Track, and hit Great Divide into the Spanish Oaks. I know I'm probably speaking Greek to the people that don't live in B Cave. That's going to put a road on the long part of this tract of land that's going to make it very, very difficult and enticing to keep that as private, especially because that's prime commercial development. And if we don't protect that now, I will guarantee you part of that will get peeled off into commercial.
Is Brown, you're saying, the corner of 71 and Hamilton Pool?
No, no, if you, okay, you know where the rental center is, kind of by the, okay? It's directly behind the rental center, okay, up to where the hills start, and then it goes all the way over to Great Divide, which...
To Spanish Oaks.
Do what?
Oh, I was telling you, towards Spanish Oaks.
Yeah, going towards Spanish Oaks, yeah. Yeah, so...
Is that where that windmill is, behind that, over to the rental?
So Great Divide, the Spanish Oaks has an entryway with the windmill, that's Spanish Oaks. The next is Great Divide, it's not very well marked, but it's the only road that goes there. It's from that road, and that road kind of snakes around to cross the creek. It's from there, basically, all the way behind the rental center, and it bites up against the LTYA fields. It's a big tract of land, it's still more or less pristine. There's an old log cabin back there that was the, that the Parks and Rec department's in right now. That can be used as a visitor's center, a lot of, lot of things. We have an old schoolhouse that's kind of tucked back behind the police department. You know, we can move that over. I mean, there's so many things we could do. It doesn't necessarily have to be just a nature park. But I believe that it needs to be preserved as a part of Hill Country and used for, you know...
How many acres is that?
I think it's 30. Yeah, so something 30 or something like that. It's a pretty large tract of land, I mean, it's not just a little five acre. The city owns it. The city bought it, yeah. The city owns it. But they have not dedicated or said, hey, we're going to make it A, B, C, or D. And the concern that I know I have, and, you know, and I'm sure there are some council members that would like it to go one way or another, but I want to make sure, if I'm on council, that I will fight to make sure that that stays open space. Because again, if that's, the big development's right in front of it. The Spanish Oaks is right in front of it, Backyard's across from it, you have 71. If that goes commercial, then that entire section is just going to be one big commercial part. And I'm not anti-development whatsoever. I just think that you've got to, you've got to have a good marriage between developers and, you know, the nature.
Yeah, we have to have balance between those things. You can't just have development, you have to have some open spaces as well. There has to be a balance between those two. Exactly, Leander, Ligerville, yes, and we'd like to prevent that from happening. No, not at all. And what, I know Jennifer said this at the beginning, but this is the way that the election works, is that you vote for, you can vote for three candidates. So it's not necessarily the running against each other, it's their five, five total running. You vote for three, or two, or two, however you decide to vote. Yes. We would like for you to vote for us.
Okay, that's it. Thank you for staying all these years, for like forever. I really, really appreciate it.